Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How are you all doing? It's so good to see you all out here on a Thursday afternoon. There are so many other things that you could have been doing, but you chose to come out here with us tonight. So we are truly grateful for your attendance and participation. Okay? We're family tonight, okay? We're family. So my name is Tari Spear. I stand before you today as First Vice President of Missing Voices, Missing Votes. We are the organization that are hosting this event for tonight. We're gonna have a great time. Education is key. You see that book right there? That's what we're gonna talk about. It's 922 pages, but we're not going to be able to cover all 922 pages. But we do have some experts sitting before you that's going to break it down for you and allow you to go out and share the knowledge that you received on tonight. I do have a quote I wanna read. It says, "Democracy cannot succeed unless those who express their choice are prepared to choose wisely. The real safeguard of democracy, therefore, is education." I wholeheartedly believe that you all are going to be schooled tonight. Okay? Without further ado, we are going to move forward. We're going to cut some days because we got started a little late. So bear with us. We have a couple of sponsors that we do want to acknowledge on tonight. I am going to have them come forward. They will give a quick two- to three-minute presentation of their mission and their organization. But first of all, we wanna give thanks to the Worship Center. So Bishop Thompson is gonna come up first and share a few words. If Bishop Thompson is not ready, we will circle back so we can keep moving right along. Okay? So then that means we're going to have Justin Jones from Equal Ground come up and share a few words with you. Pastor, we're gonna come back. And Bishop, we're gonna come back for you, okay? Justin Jones has already beat you up here too. Okay, Justin?
Peace and blessings, family. How y'all doing this evening?
Good.
My name is Justin Jones. I serve as the field manager for Equal Ground. If this is your first time hearing of our organization, we are a Black-led, Black-owned, voice organization here in Central Florida, working to close the Black political leadership black and to expand voting rights and increase Black political education and participation this election season. We here at Equal Ground, we believe in a fair and just democracy, one that is expansive and represents the will and needs of the people. But unfortunately, a lot of our Republican lawmakers do not. We have seen the last four to six years voter suppression bills come out of Tallahassee, one in which purged over 4.9 million people from the vote by mail database. Currently, in this election season, there would be thousands of people who are not gonna be able to cast their vote because they do not know about the changes in voting laws. We have also seen the attack on Black voting power with the dismantlement of two Black performing congressional voting districts due to the DeSantis gerrymandered laws. We have also seen voter intimidation in which DeSantis had returning citizens arrested because they thought they were eligible to vote because the state of Florida gave them a voter registration card. We've also seen this state overturning of elections where if DeSantis were moving, our state attorney would need more help because she does not fit his political ideology. So what we gonna do about it? We not gonna stand around and say, "I..." Like Sister said, education is key, and we need your help this election season to make sure that our people get out to vote and that they could vote knowing that there are changes in voting laws and that they need to be aware of these amendments and all the seats are up for grabs. I know we're talking about Project 2025, but we're recovering from Project 2018. And it's still not over yet. We still got two more years. So we need you. So we hope that you'll participate in some of our virtual phone making events because we're gonna make thousands of calls all year to make sure people are aware of these changes. We're also doing community canvassing, which we'll be knocking on doors to make sure that people are informed. On November 2nd, you can mark your calendar. Equal Ground will be at our headquarters. We invite you to join us. And guess what? We gonna feed your family, all right? We'll be in the office making phone calls from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at our office that's located on West Morgan, about 15 minutes from here. And also, on November 5th, we are launching a statewide canvas blitz. So we'll be partnering with organizations all across the states, and we're gonna be canvassing on November 5th to make sure our people get out to vote. On your seats, if there's a palm card and you'll see Equal Ground, you can scan up your code and tap in our organization so you can stay informed about everything that we have coming up. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Are you ready now, Bishop?
I am.
All right, come on up. It's your turn. You don't have 30 minutes tonight. You only get two to three minutes, okay?
Well, I always tell them I never preach more than an hour. That shouldn't be okay. Good evening. God bless you. So glad to welcome you to the Worship Center in Orlando. I welcome you with my wife, who walks by my side, and is my elect lady and partner in crime, as well as good stuff. And praise for me. And you need that today. I also have some great individuals on my list nationally, and I've had the pleasure of serving them for almost 31 years. They allowed me to serve them and kind of put up with me, but they have such gifts. And those gifts are a lot, a lot of community work. This eagle right here has been one of those engages who came over and motivated us to vote and stood there with something and were fee and said, "You really do this? You gotta do this." And I admired it. I was the son of the mom, but the man of God who's probably looking down now and has a little ways was one of my mentors and men so much to me. And I saw him do great things, so much so that I decided we needed to look around our community and make sure that we were giving the education that everyone needed, that you should be took the time to put things out that maybe you didn't know. I think this is one of those things that the knowledge may have slipped. I was looking to try to motivate as many of the young adults that I could to make sure they had strong knowledge of what they were seeing or possibly not seeing. We did that for a long time, whether it went from food or whether it was important enough to talk about education when school was graduating about 60%. And we decided they could loan me to that school for four years to be a founder and change the trajectory of the school to now graduates 98%. So that's important, whatever you do. Oh yeah, continue to practice. Whatever we do, we've always had, I've always had great support from these wonderful people in my church saying, "We're gonna be a community in church." And so here we are tonight. And the reason we're doing this is because this is for the people. It impacts us and it gives us the opportunity to learn maybe something you didn't know. I'm an avid reader, and I did 48 pages. And I was a little tired afterwards, and I was trying to figure out, looked at that page and needs that, trying to put it all together, so I did a run as well. And so I'm gonna thank you all for being here, and I'm gonna thank all of you for doing this. And our representative is sitting at the table, and I think she's related to somebody, but you'll go on from there. We're happy to have the first elected African-American in the Supreme Court with us, and I'm glad for what he does. Commissioner, I want to thank you so much for allowing people to be with us. And ladies and gentlemen, this is a fun show, so we always say, "Enjoy yourself." And there was this thing that I got my church really motivated about. My mom's done, who said, "How many times am I...?" I have two more mentions. The thing that I got my church motivated by says, "When we need, we eat." So thank you for being here, and let me know if I can help you in any way, make you feel better.
Thank you so much. It's always great to play you. Next, we're going to have our president, or my president, Fran Ed of Missing Voices, Missing Votes.
Good evening.
Uh-uh. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you for being a part of what we really need to happen in all of our communities across this country, especially in the state of Florida. Let me tell you a little bit about Missing Voices, Missing Votes. Our mission is to locate and empower those whose voices may have been overlooked and marginalized in the democratic process. Through outreach, advocacy, education, community engagement, we strive to ensure that every individual has the opportunity to cast their ballot and have their vote counted on Election Day. We also are committed to protecting and expanding voting rights through proactive civic engagement initiatives by amplifying underrepresented voices, fostering inclusive dialogue, and advocating for equitable access to the ballot box. We strive to cultivate a vibrant democracy where every individual has the power to shape their future. Our mission is also to bridge gaps, empower those communities, and safeguard the fundamental right to vote for all. It's imperative to locate, educate, register, organize, and mobilize purged voters as well as low propensity voters to ensure that they show up at the polls and vote on Election Day, which is detrimental to saving our democracy. Thank everybody for coming. Back to Tari, add your words.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next, we are going to hear from Jim Moyer. He is representing the Florida Asian American Justice Alliance.
My name is Jim Moyer. I live in Atollie. So my state representative, Levon Bracy Davis, is here. My city commissioner, George Oliver, is here. Honored to be here with them. I am representing the Florida Asian American Justice Alliance. Just to give you some background, I went back to school late in life. In 2019, I had a doctorate education, and my dissertation was on Asian American stereotypes. And I've known Asian people in the United States probably for 30 years, almost 30 years. So when I met certain people in Atollie at an event, I connected with some Asian American group. And I'm now the political director for the Florida Asian American Justice Alliance. Going to read our mission statement. The mission of the Florida Asian American Justice Alliance is to promote social justice and equality while further developing the economic, cultural, political, and civic engagement of Florida's Asian community. Now, we learn the hard way that if you sit back and do nothing, people like the Republicans in this state and DeSantis will basically walk all over you. So like many of you here, we strongly believe in getting out the vote. The vote is your power. It's very important. We all deserve the vote. Our organization started when a bill that's now law, Senate Bill 264 of 2023, was passed. And we called the Elliott Land Law. And I'm gonna explain to you the most discriminatory portion of that law. A person can come over here, can even be in the process of voting down the road to fulfill the American dream, not fully understanding the law or the language. They buy a house, and they can go to jail for five years. Five years. And believe it or not, if you were the one selling the home, you were a builder, you could go to jail for one year. It's gotta change, and we're trying to change it. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
Thank you, thank you. Jim, I hate to cut you off because that's a very, very good point, but we're going to cover that in panel. I'm quite sure that's going to be discussed, so I did not want you to still echo thunder. Let's just leave some of that for her, okay? All right, so now we are going to have Commissioner George Oliver III to come up and bring greetings. I'm glad he's going to be introducing our moderator, and we will move forward with the program.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you guys so much for coming out tonight. I'm gonna start off with a quote, and the reason that you may have heard this quote before, but I wanna read it to you again to hear. "If there is no struggle, there is no progress. Those who profess to favor freedom and yet depreciate agitation are men who want crops without plowing, plowing the ground. They want rain without thunder and lightning. They want ocean without the awful roar of the many waters. This struggle may be a moral one. It may be a physical one. It may be both, a moral and a physical one, but it must be a struggle. Power conceives nothing without a demand. It never did, and it never will." That was Frederick Douglass. And by listening to this and his words, he's saying that any form of tyranny without anyone resisting will continue to be tyranny. And this is what we have been dealing with, not only in the state of Florida, but throughout this country, that there have been some radical views about how we should live as Americans. And those radical views many times go unchallenged. And I'll tell you, I go first from firsthand experience. From where I sit in my diocese, I listen to a lot of radical views that I have to just sit there and take. But again, without a force of opposition, it will continue to go on. And with that force of opposition, you need backup. That backup is your vote. Your vote is powerful. If your vote wasn't so powerful, why would they continue to try to disregard your vote or make it hard for you to vote? There's a reason for that, because they understand that it is power. So again, with that being said, I want to thank you guys for coming out to this Project 2025 educational piece here. This is not a political forum. This is not a forum to promote any candidacy. It is a forum to educate the community, to understand what happens if certain people were to get into office, what would happen to our communities, our neighborhoods, our states, our counties. So again, thank you guys for coming out. And as we get started, I want to introduce you to some of the people I already know, Dr. Levon Bracy, who is actually here tonight to moderate this wonderful event. She has been traveling throughout the state, moderating these type of events, educating folks on all of this particular subject, as well as other subjects when it comes to getting out and voting. Without further ado, I want to turn the mic over to Dr. Levon Bracy Wright.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Wright. Good evening to all of you. It's delight to see all of you. And we are going to get started with our mission part this evening. First, I would like our panel to introduce themselves. I will give you one minute just to tell us what you want to about yourself, and we will get started there after, starting with Echo.
Thank you, Doctor. My name is Echo King. I'm the president of Florida Asian American Justice Alliance. I'm also immigration attorney. I've been practicing immigration law for the past 12 years. And our organization, Dr. Jim already gave you a brief introduction, our organization's fairly new. We started last year because of the discriminatory law that prohibiting Chinese Americans, especially Chinese Americans, from buying homes. The Chinese Americans here we're talking about, not only, like, we're not talking about Chinese citizens living in China, we're talking about Chinese Americans living in the United States, living in Florida. Some of them have been living here for over 10 years. You know, there have been students, workers, employees, researchers, student, I mean, engineers, professors, but they have been, you know, deprived of this fundamental right to buying homes. The reason being is national security, but there is zero evidence linking that Chinese Americans here living in Florida have any national security concerns. But this is all the, just, you know, rhetoric of Chinese Americans because of the China-US relationship. That's why Chinese Americans here are all spies. That's the rhetoric behind it. So we decided to fight back, and we started this organization because traditionally, Asian Americans are not very politically involved in the past. We just focus on own family and education, the children's education. We are not very much involved in politics at all. So this really made us think that, you know, this is because we have no voice, and we need to let the, you know, people know, the legislature know that this is not right. This is discrimination. I'm very glad that Representative Brice Davis also voted no to this bill and along with other 16 Democrats, legislators. Fortunately, because of super majority in our legislature, this type of, you know, discriminatory law still passed.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Over one, it's a one.
Thank you. One minute, please.
All right, I'll go 30 seconds.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. It's a delight to be here. My name is Genesis Robinson. I have the great pleasure of serving as interim executive director of Equal Ground Education Fund. My colleague, Justin, talked about the organization. We are engaged in ensuring that Black folks throughout the state are empowered and engaged in the political process, particularly civic engagement process. We need to move beyond just voting as our way of civic participation. We have to be engaged year-round during the election season and not during the election season. And so I'm happy to have this conversation, you know, explore about the dangers of Project 2025.
Thank you. Good evening. I am state representative Levon Brice Davis. It's a delight to be here with each of you. Welcome to House District 40. I will say this, I have spoken at many events, on many panels, even as a keynote speaker for a lunch in a day of 400 people. But right now, there is much fear and trembling because I have never been at a panel discussion with my mother as the moderator. Y'all, I'm scared. I'm scared. So be gentle, hold him down. Be gentle. This is a delight to be here with you. I'm thankful for this opportunity. I'm thankful for the opportunity to step off the campaign trail and present to you not necessarily as a candidate, but as a citizen that you represent in this House District 40.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rashawn Young, and I proudly serve House District 40 as well as staff and representative Brice Davis. As she has said, it is good to be able to step away from the hustle and bustle campaign just 20 days away from the election and be able to come and do something that we love and that is being community, moving with our constituents, people who we represent. Because every time we go up to Tallahassee, we take you with us. And so just so excited that, and much like her, I also have a little bit of fear. I'm gonna thank Dr. Levon Wright very much.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, let's get started. We don't have much time. I'm gonna assume that everyone knows what Project 2025 is, but just in case, simply stated, it is the playbook for the first 108 days if the Republicans regain the office of the presidency on November the 5th. That is that 922-page document. It was spearheaded by the Heritage Foundation, and it is supported by 100 conservative organizations. The document is bold, and it tells us their agenda, starting in 2025. They let us know what the future will look like if Project 2025 is implemented. Basically, if Project 2025 is implemented, it will reverse progress that America has made in the last 50 years. And that's what Project 2025 is. Now let's ask some questions to our esteemed panelists. The first question, and I'm gonna ask each of you to answer the question. I'm gonna give you 90 seconds, and if you are over 90 seconds, you're gonna see me wave the microphone. And that means that you need to wrap it up so that we can get to some of the other questions. So I'm gonna start with you, Ms. King. And the question that all of you will answer is, as it relates to Project 2025, what one issue do you consider to be the most dangerous issue if implemented that will destroy democracy in this country?
Dr. Brice, I focused on, the past couple months, I focused extensive on the Project 2025, the impact of Project 2025 on Chinese community. So I'm sure there are many other, you know, there are 900 pages, so there are many other issues, but can I focus on the impact for Chinese community? So that may not be the most, you know, dangerous thing, but from my community point of view, those are very, very, it is an essential threat to our community. In one page, it says that it's not only, basically, it's denying 5,000 years' history. China is saying that something inherently wrong with Chinese culture of the past 5,000 years. It's not that Chinese communism. It's just the culture and the history is inherently wrong. That's why China needs to have external pressure in order to correct it. So what can you tell, what you can tell from this is that they want to go even further. They probably, I mean, we're talking about military, you know, the war all the time, but they, what do you, how do you explain this? They want, this can be only corrected by external pressure. So we are very concerned about this. And also, it's cutting off all the ties, trying to cut off the ties with China.
Mr. Alves.
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, for me, I think the biggest threat of Project 2025, like you said, is the threat to our democracy, the very existence of what America is or could be on its best day. When you have a plan that essentially seeks to consolidate power within the executive branch of government by bypassing the other equal branches of our government, we should all be conservative about that, particularly when the person potentially could be implementing Project 2025, someone who has made it clear that they don't believe in free and fair elections. And so I think it is a terrible combination, regardless of who the president would be, Project 2025 would be terrible, but knowing that you have someone with the likes of Donald Trump, potentially in the executive seat to implement these things, giving this position on democracy, this is quite dangerous. We have co-equal branches of government for a reason, very concerning of the amount of power that we concentrate within the executive branch.
The most dangerous issue of Project 2025 is that Project 2025 exists and is out in the open, the very boldness of Project 2025. You know, my mother talks openly about her issues in terms of integrating, and we remember back in Jim Crow, years and years ago, where bigotry was covert, right? When people, or the KKK wore sheets and masks, and we didn't know who people were and are. The fact that this playbook is so old and in our face and published, and they are giving the playbook for everybody to see, that part scares me, because we're not dealing with covert and oppressive behavior right now. We're dealing with stuff that is in our face. They want us to see their playbook. They want us to see their plan for oppression, and that's concerning. It's very concerning to me. But it has a big one issue that we have to deal with, the education system and the plan and process and what they want to implement as it relates to our education system, specifically corporate education.
90 seconds. As an African-American man, which I cannot remove myself from, the most important issue for me is found in Section 3, Chapter 17, about the Department of Justice, that was written by Jean Hamilton, who's a rivaling extremist, who talks about unleashing force on protesters and activists. Because as an African-American man, whose grandmother marched with the nurses in Charleston, South Carolina, when they were protesting and striking, I understand that a part of how we share our stories and advocate for the issues that matter to us is through our civil disobedience. And so when you hear about how, even in the days and age of Black Lives Matter movement, on the heels of that, and going through what we experienced in the midst of COVID with George Floyd, and to hear that people want to empower federal law enforcement to be able, as Donald Trump said on September 29th in Erie, Pennsylvania, give them the power and authority to have one really rough hour, it is certainly upsetting to me, and that is what I would say. give them the power and authority to have one really rough hour, it is certainly upsetting to me. And that is, I would say, is the most important issue in that book.
Thank you so much.
Our next question, and I heard Ms. Davis talk about education. What are the potential effects of Project 2025 on public education and cultural institutions? And we will begin with Mr. Robinson.
For me, I think it is the erosion of public support for allowing everyone to access a good education. They make, you know, they, they don't hide the fact that their intention is to really make this a matter of haves and have-nots. We talk about the elimination of funding for programs like Head Start, for elimination of Pell Grants, elimination of federal dollars to allow people to be educated. That is something that should concern us because we know that, as, as a quote says, "Education is the passport to the future," right? And if you're educated and if you have opportunities, you can lift yourself up and make something out of your life. And so to take that away is just a recipe for disaster. I have a five-year-old, right? And I couldn't wait for him to go to public education so we didn't have to pay that, that money, you know, to private school, to daycare. But in all seriousness, you know, there are many people who rely on our public education system and it's proven to work and to know that that is at stake of us moving to a place in which only the well-connected and privileged have access to a good quality education. It's super concerning for me.
First, I want to say, well, how my chief of staff wanted to show each and every one of you that he read all night and brings up his, so I did. Which page, which page number, which page?
The page number, nevermind.
If I can count us by ninety seconds. There's a lot that concerns me as it relates to education. What we've seen right here in the state of Florida, I almost feel like our governor wrote the foreword as it relates to Project 2025 and education. We've already seen what's been, right? We've already seen the narrative that, you know, rewriting of history, you know, enslavement was, there was benefits to enslavement. You know, we've already heard the narrative, I represent the great city of Kohi. We've heard the narrative that the Kohi massacre that happened in nineteen twenty was mutual combat, right? And that, that it wasn't folks trying to take homeowners' land, it was mutual combat of one person and another. We've already seen what, what Project 2025 wants to do with our educational system on a national level. We already seen some of that happening right here in the state of Florida, and it's, it's just concerning. One thing that, that is problematic is the Department of Education would be abolished in Project 2025. It's stupidly no more. Another thing in terms of public education is our teachers' unions will go away with Project 2025. So extremely concerning some of the things that they have in the wheelhouse if Project 2025 was ever really implemented in our public education system.
I'm a graduate of the University of Columbia. I'm also in my master's program at the University of Columbia. The knowledge of the Radlers. For me, for me, what is concerning is a fight that we're already fighting that would be exasperated by Project 2025, and that is the funding for our HBCUs. In September of twenty twenty-three, FAMU filed a lawsuit against the state of Florida for disproportionately funding them as opposed to the University of Florida and Florida State University. In October of twenty twenty-three, Tennessee State University filed a lawsuit against the state of Tennessee for doing the same exact thing when it came to the University of Tennessee and the funding that Tennessee State University was getting. And so HBCUs have historically, as my grandmother would say, had to get the butter from the duck and, and make, you know, the resources that are already causing us to be under-resourced, stretch for quality education for our students. And it would only be, it would almost explode in the face of HBCUs if the Department of Education ceases to exist, which has, under this current administration, I know that we're not getting political, but has been extremely helpful in ensuring that our HBCUs, our historical colleges and universities have been able to serve the students that we see, the, to, to ensure that teachers aren't getting, that students are getting a quality education. And as a product, I mean, I think I speak on behalf of all the HBCU graduates that we do produce quality alumni that go on to change and be effective and law-abiding citizens, because I know that's sometimes a concern a bit. So before that, I say that might be enhanced, so I'm making a very.
Thank you, Ms. King.
I'm, I'm very scared that my seven-year-old, when, when he goes to school, to go to public school. The reason being that the Florida legislature last year, twenty twenty-fourth, I mean, this year, just passed a law, bill, that the mandatory teaching of communism in K-12 public school system. Without, you know, proper instruction, this can cause lots of problems to our kids, to our community, because that, it says, you know, it will really demonize, it, it doesn't have differentiation of Chinese communism from Chinese people. Chinese people are different. So the, without proper instruction, they will assume that all Chinese are evil. And just like when we grew up in China, there is that we were told from our, when we were kids, that the American, American is, United States imperialism and American people are evil. And then they have all this, you know, the scary pictures of Americans, just like monsters. So when we grew up, we think Americans are evil too. And now they are trying to do this in, in Florida. And I'm very fearful for my seven-year-old son to go to school. I don't know what's gonna happen to him.
Our next concern, what are the potential impact of civil rights and social programs as it relates to Project 2025? Ms. Davis?
First, let me say, well, there's been such great comments, it's dragging my, bringing my thoughts. Just want to say, I'm two, a graduate of two HBCUs, for whatever that's worth, born in University College of Law at Howard University. With that, I'll answer the question. In terms of civil rights protections, you know, when, when there's deregulation, there's, there's room to reduce enforcement as it relates to civil rights protection. What I'm concerned about is protection in terms of employment, in terms of housing, in terms of healthcare. When there's not anyone policing, or there's deregulation, we know that that opens the door for misuse, that opens the door for discrimination, that opens, especially when you know that there's nobody policing it, right? Especially when you know that there's nobody to come knock on the door when you say that, you know, you are willing to sell your house or rent your house or do something to this person, but not to this person based on the color of their skin. That opens the door for plenty of discrimination. So that's, that's what really concerns me is the employment sector, sector, the housing sector, the healthcare sector. It just opens up the door to be able to pick and choose people that perhaps look like you or don't look like you.
I think as a member of the Gen Z community, I think for me, the realization is that my, my peers are very attuned on, into civil rights issues right now, whether it be racial or the inclusivity of the LGBTQ plus community, or it is about accessibility and those disabilities. We are extremely attuned with what is happening in regard to our civil rights and, and not only our civil rights issues, but as you said, Dr. Lavon, for the industries that we are impacted. And so as someone who is wanting to become a homeowner, realizing that what is outlined in this book would tear away at the support systems that have been placed to help us to own homes through ownership assistance programs and things like that, and our social security. My grandmother rolled out on social security, and I want to make sure that I have mine as well. And so, I mean, those, those are extremely important services that are provided to us. And as Ms. King said earlier, if we tout, you know, being the land and the free and the home of the brave and the greatest nation in the world, how do we treat our own citizens poorly? How do we not ensure that we are providing them with the services to be, to truly fulfill the promise of being the greatest nation in the world?
Thank you. Ms. King.
Today, Leader Francis Trisco just shared a video, campaign video with me. That's the, that GOP was attacking her because she signed, she filed a bill for, to amend the property ban law. So they were saying that she, they were attacking her, saying that she was siding with communist China and trying to, you know, make the Florida property prices higher for the regular prices. So she was, you know, siding with communists, which doesn't make any sense because Chinese Americans, Asian, Chinese Americans in Florida, we only, you know, if you look at the property, we only, it's only the zero-point-one percent less than zero-point-one, zero-point-one percent was purchased by Chinese Americans. There's no way that we made the price, you know, property price, we drive the price higher. So, but they were using this to attack the leader, Trisco, because of, you know, nowadays, they use, everything is, you know, it's communist. That's, that's their tactic. It's very scary. So really, we really need to fight back. We needed to do something about this.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Yes, ma'am. But I think for me, just the potential of us deepening the inequality gap that exists within this country, whether you look at healthcare, education, employment, right? You implement a lot of these things, like Representative Brice said, that takes away the accountability and takes away the opportunity for us to have a playing, a, a even playing field. It, it can be disruptive to the great detriment of people who are the most vulnerable in our society and in our community. But also, when we look at diversity, equity, and inclusion, right? As was said earlier, you know, Florida is sort of the epicenter and the breeding ground for policies to do such things. And so we understand the importance of DEI, not only in our own understanding and our own engagement with one another, being able to be understanding of folks within the work space, within healthcare space, within social and education settings. You know, that, that is a great concern. And so for me, it is the fact that the inequalities that we see that exist today, the distance that we see even greater. So for me, that's, that's probably the biggest concern on that front.
Thank you so much. Mr. Young, Project 2025 proposes several policies around social services, including healthcare and welfare. What are the potential impacts of those proposed changes in the underserved communities?
Communities of color are historically more likely to suffer from chronic diseases, heart disease, diabetes, asthma, all of the signs, right? We are, as Genesis said, living in a state that has served as the breeding ground for many of these extreme policies that we are seeing that are popping up across the country. The reality about the legislature is a lot of the ideas that, you know, many of the legislators in Florida and other states, the, the laws that they are passing are copy and paste from the ones that we are doing here. As a matter of fact, there was a legislator who got caught up, he kind of, he didn't even change the state in the, in the bill. So there is a lot of policies. We have a governor who has refused for six years federal funding to expand Medicaid and Medicare here in the state of Florida. And so for healthcare access, which is critical for our communities, we are, have to understand that many of our people are uninsured or underinsured. And so custom programs like Medicaid or increased restrictions on welfare programs are going to detrimentally impact communities of color.
Is when you recognize the inequalities that exist currently, right? What happens when you take away the protections, the investment that exists now, right? It's almost like what we see with respect to public education, right? Everybody acknowledges that our public education system has a long way to go to close the achievement gap, to produce the type of results that we need to produce. And yet, we here in the state of Florida just essentially go to blank check to take, you know, potential millions of dollars out of our public education system, which only makes it worse, right? You don't make a problem better by taking away the resources. And so that is a great concern when you talk about, you know, the fact that this Project 2025 does not wish to see an equitable playing field where which everyone has access to the goods and services that lead to a good, strong quality of life, whether that's access to affordable healthcare, access to, you know, affordable housing, insurance, right? Education. And so we know that the, the issues and the problems and the gaps that we see now will only be made worse if any of this were to be implemented.
So we know that Project 2025 is going to affect marginalized communities. It's going to affect poor communities. It's going to affect people that don't have a lot, people that have been making a dollar out of fifteen cents. That, that's, that's who this is going to affect. So those that are on welfare and those that have subsidized anything, it's gonna affect you. Those that, you know, it will affect perhaps any extension that we would have for, for Medicaid, SNAP benefits. It will affect mental health services. I am a former DCF attorney. I see my good friend Miranda in the audience who is here, who works for the Department of Children and Families. It's gonna affect child welfare and the services that we are able to give and make, ensure that, that children that are in need of services and families that are in need of services from governmental entities. It will absolutely a hundred percent affect that. So when you look at an agency like the Department of Children and Families who seeks to unify a family and give them services to keep the family unit whole, when you take back resources, where, where do you think that's gonna leave that family? Where do you think it's gonna leave that family that needs, you know, mental health counseling, or that mother that needs a parenting class, or that, that child that, that needs to speak to a therapist, or, or SNAP benefits, put groceries in, in the cover? You, you take that away, what do you think is gonna happen to that family? That, that, that mother that perhaps was happy, unified with that child, now DCF is coming and saying, no, wait, you can't, you're not a good mother. You've got to take people and take your children away. And they're only trying to, to progress and make themselves whole. So this domino triple-down effect is going to be, would be, that is going to be, because I'm not speaking that. This triple-down effect, if this were to be implemented, would be horrific for communities, especially those, most of those that look like me.
My name is Russell Drake. I was being taught by Dr. Lavon Brice, as well as Reverend Dr. Randolph Brice.
That's all I need to say.
Regarding the question you just asked, and everybody else is absolutely correct, I'm gonna put it blunt. They are cutting these services. The stuff is going away in Project 2025. They're taking it all away. They're rolling it back. They're gonna take it away. They'll take away welfare. They want to result it to being the haves and the have-nots. And either if you have a little, they want to make sure you don't have anything. That's the goal of all of Project 2025, and that's what's gonna happen. The forty-fifth president is elected to be the forty-seventh. We're in real trouble.
And can I, can I also add? Poverty has no color, right? Poverty is not only sold out to African-American or Latinx or, or Asian-American communities. It, it is widespread. It's something that anybody and, and most people have to deal with, argue with, right? And I think that we have almost fallen victim to the right-wing political propaganda that, you know, it is us versus them. And the reality is that there are more of us than it is them. And this, this, these policies do not impact middle and lower-class citizens. This is for the, the one percent. This is for people who have generational wealth that goes back to times before. And, and we were on a panel together a couple of months ago, maybe even a year ago, and one of the panelists said, "The reality for me is that while I may never know a slave owner, I know their grandchildren." And, and these are people who are living off of the wealth that was established by their family hundreds of years ago.
Let's look at Amendment Four, which is on the ballot of all Floridians. With Amendment Four, potentially reshaping women's reproductive rights, what are the implications of this with Project 2025?
First, let me say I support Amendment Four. Women need to have the right to decide what they do with their body and make family decisions. I'm a person that is, I'm pro-choice overall. Doesn't mean I'm necessarily pro-abortion, but I think everybody deserves a choice. I'm a man. I have no opportunity to ever bear a child or carry a child around for nine months. So I don't need to be making decisions like that. But women need to make the decisions for themselves, and it's a travesty that it even has come to this point. And Project 2025, there will be no opportunity for that. It's like literally be going back in history over a hundred years, and it will be criminalized further. Right now, it's already criminalized when you see there are doctors who are scared to perform abortions in different states across the nation. And there are people who are afraid to get them as well. But with Project 2025, it will, I mean, But with Project Twenty Twenty Five, it will, I mean, it will go so backwards, it'll almost be like they're chasing down people and hunting them. And, you know, people will almost be rapping people out almost like fifty years ago when communism was a big thing and people were rapping them out. And so, we're going backwards when in government we should be expanding and having more liberty, not stripping them from people.
Thank you.
I grew up in a communist China, so I know this, and with Black China come to the United States because this is the land of freedom. And we were hoping that, I mean, we, in our, everybody, everyone from China, we were thinking that this is, at this time, we don't even know if this is really America or not. Because in Florida, in the past couple of years, what happened in Florida and then also this Project Twenty Twenty Five, if you think of when I, when we grew up in China, this is like the government decides what you can do, what you can do, can or cannot do with your body. This is like communism, this is not America.
Yeah, I think the greatest threat is the fact that the issue of reproductive care, abortion access will now have national implications, right? One of the things that happened when Roe went away is we sort of had states making decisions and stuff, but some say in the best interest, they, you know, states would regulate the issue, you know, state by state. And as such, we still have some areas of the state where abortion access is still available, right? But when you impact, implement Project Twenty Twenty Five at the federal level, it is now uniformity throughout the nation. And so, that is very dangerous because now the notion of states' rights does not exist, right? So, even if a state and its residents or its, you know, voting population said, hey, this is something that we want to offer, they will no longer have that ability. And I think obviously what we're seeing here in the state of Florida is of significance. We have a state that is continuing to roll back reproductive access here in the state. We went from only twenty-four weeks one year to fifteen weeks the next year. And as of May first of this year, it was six weeks. So, the only true way, absent of Project Twenty Twenty Five, to ensure and ensuring the protection of reproductive healthcare is through Amendment Four here in the state of Florida. Regardless of your position on the issue, if you care about people having the ability to make decisions that are best interest of them and their families and their bodies, that is the only guaranteed way to do that is through Amendment Four. The last thing that I'll say is for black and brown communities, right? As a husband of a black wife who found out about our snuggish son when she was nine weeks, right? If she lived in the state of Florida when this six-week abortion ban was in effect, we wouldn't have had an option, even if we wanted to, you know, make a decision that would not allow our son to, you know, be brought up to the world. So, I think when we realize the issue of black control of health and the issue of so many black women facing great challenges going through pregnancy, I think we need to pay very close attention to this in terms of preserving the option for people.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
I am a lawmaker. I have a degree in theater and I have a degree at J.D. in law. I am not skilled to be able to tell anyone in this room what to do with their ballot. So, it disappoints me that lawmakers like myself, policymakers, are involving themselves in healthcare decisions. I am not a doctor, I am not skilled, and healthcare decisions, what reproductive health is healthcare, need to be between a person, a woman, their god, their family, but I should not be in that conversation. Period, point blank, full stomach. And my God, that part. And it is disappointing to me that we have inserted ourselves in conversations like healthcare. And I'd like to say this, and if Madam Moderator, if I can have just a little grace.
I'll give you a little grace.
A little grace, a little grace. I'll give you some grace. If I can be personal for just a moment, many of you know my father, who passed a year ago on Father's Day. He had, and this is probably because I wrote it, I'm dead, it's not Orlando, it's not no. But he had a doubt with colon cancer. We decided, we sat down as a family, he was a part of those conversations, his doctor was a part of those conversations, my brother, myself, my mother, and we talked about his care. We talked about him going on chemotherapy, he tried that, we talked about his second out round of chemotherapy. And then, he determined that he didn't want to go on any more chemo, he didn't want to do any more radiation. His health declined. And then finally, he was so alone, we decided as a family to put him in hospice care. And when he passed on, he passed on in a tranquil place, he passed on with peace of mind. Our family surrounded him, and he was able to go to glory and be ushered into heaven on his own terms. While that is beautiful to hear, what disappoints me is with that decision, family, doctors, the patient had the determination of what was to happen and what was the outcome. How dare we say that a man or a person that doesn't deal with reproductive healthcare can determine what happens with them, that a woman can't have that same determination? We can't have that discretion to determine our outcome with just our doctor and our family? And we have to include judges, we have to include lawmakers, we have to include legislators. How dare we say that? It disappoint me, y'all, I know this is not political, oh yes, I mean.
Before I begin, let me give you a quick fact. The Florida Legislature is sixty-forty split, sixty percent male, forty percent female. All right, keep that, keep that in your head. This reminds me of the option block of the eighteenth and nineteenth century when humans were viewed as product and not as person. As someone who sits with the representative in Tallahassee and watches and had to watch as Republican female lawmakers quite literally left the floor of the House so that they didn't have to vote on an abortion ban, they chose not to vote. They abstained from their vote when the abortion ban hit the floor of the House of Representatives. It is so disheartening to understand what they had to do and how they don't agree with their party on particular issues. And how now that it is on the ballot, their same party that they have for, some of them gone to bat for, is not taking them into consideration, it's disheartening. With the sixty-fourty split in mind and seeing those women leave the floor, the only thing that I have to say about Amendment Four is that I am supporting it. And the other thing is that no man should have the power to legislate if he will never experience.
That part. Thank you very much. Given, let's look at some of the areas that Project Twenty Twenty Five will impact. What does the future look like with Project Twenty Twenty Five? Let me give you some brief indications. If Project Twenty Twenty Five goes into effect, there will be an end to no-fault divorce, complete ban on abortions without exceptions, ban contraceptives, additional tax breaks for the corporate one percent, higher taxes for working class, elimination of unions and worker protections, raise the retirement age, cut Social Security, cut Medicare, end the Affordable Care Act, raise prescription drug prices, eliminate the Department of Education, use public taxpayers' money for private religious schools, teach Christian religious beliefs in public schools, end free and discounted school lunch programs, end civil rights DEI protections in the government, ban African-American and gender studies in all levels of educations, ban books and curriculum about slavery, end climate protection, increase Arctic drilling, deregulate big business and oil industries, promote and expedite capital punishment, end marriage equality, condemn single moms while promoting only traditional families, defund the FBI and Homeland Security, use the military to break up domestic protests, mass deportation of immigrants and incarceration in camps, end birthright citizenship, ban Muslims from entering the country, eliminate federal agencies like the FDA, the EPA, and more, continue to pack the Supreme Court and lower courts with right-wing judges. That is what is in that document of those nine hundred and twenty-two pages. That is what we will look like in Twenty Twenty Five if the Republicans win the White House in November. Given that, what role of mobilization should we play in responding to Project Twenty Twenty Five?
Add on to your list, I think there is a possibility that there will be Chinese internment camp. Just like what happened during World War Two, there was one hundred twenty thousand Japanese-Americans were sent to Japanese internment camp. Two-thirds of them are Japanese, they are American citizens. They are either second or third generation American citizens, and they were forced to, it's a concentration camp. They are deprived of everything, they get everything taken away from them. The reason, just because they look like an, at the time, that's Japan. And now, in Project Twenty Twenty Five, they talk about China and Chinese people eight hundred eighty-four times. It's much more than anything they talk about, so we are fearful. We are really, really fearful if there's this China-US relationship worsens, what are they going to do to us, Chinese-Americans living in America? That's our nightmare.
Yes, I would say when you look at what, obviously, just all the role excellently on everything that is within Project Twenty Twenty Five. But when you couple the dangers of Project Twenty Twenty Five with what we are seeing with respect to the attacks on democracy, with voter suppression laws that continue to make it hard for people to access the ballot box, with the removal of duly-elected elected officials who were elected by the people, it is, it is, as Dr. King would say, you know, fear is urgency of now, right? Think, calls us to mobilize and do everything that we can to get the word out and educate people about the implications. You know, my grandmother would always say, "People would do better if they knew better." Well, it is my hope that through these conversations that we're having, that people understand the implications of this, they do better, they know better, and they respond in kind. Although it's not enough for us to know alone, right? We need to mobilize and let everybody else know that's within our sphere of influence, right? We need to go through that phone book, you know, not that phone book, I'm about to date myself. Go through contact lists, go through your text lists, go through your Facebook friends, right? And let folks know like, hey, this is something that we need to be educated about, the stakes are really high, because we can't get it wrong. This man has already told us that all you got to do is vote one more time, and you'll never have to vote again. So, you know, I don't think it is hyperbole to think that, you know, this could very well be it. You know, Dr. King once said, "The people tell you who they are, believe them." He is telling us, and so, we would be to blame if this were to go into place and we did nothing by educating people about the dangers of it.
My dad would always say, "When America catches a cold, black America catches..." The flip, oh, y'all know that too. So, that's how I feel about Project Twenty Twenty Five. I feel like if it were implemented, America would be catching a cold, but black America would be catching a flip. So, what are we going to do about it? I believe, when you talk about what can the community do, how can we mobilize? We are our brothers and sisters' keepers. No one is coming to save us, we got to save ourselves. The answer to Project Twenty Twenty Five is voting in Twenty Twenty Four. That's the answer, that's the antidote, is to make sure that this is not implemented. Moments like this, I'm thankful to play the sponsors of this event that is raising awareness. You know, we didn't just take the information that we have, but we have films like this where we're spreading it. So, thank you to the sponsors for having these moments and anything that you learned here today. I think it is incumbent upon you to share it, to let someone know about the evils and dangers of Project Twenty Twenty Five if we don't act, if we don't vote. So, advocacy, awareness, empowerment, resource sharing. You know, I was honest at the very beginning, I didn't read all nine hundred and some pages. I didn't, we didn't read, but I keep people really close to me that have, I got a walking encyclopedia as a chief of staff, I saw my mother just call the role of all of the things that we do. So, you know, resource sharing, once you, once you know about this, once your education has power, right? So, now we can share it. And here's the thing, people may not understand Project Twenty Twenty Five and the nine hundred and some pages, but you understand about public education, you understand about your five-year-old wanting to go to public school. I understand about free and reduced lunch, I understand about DCF, I understand about the expansion of social services and all of those things that Project Twenty Twenty Five will affect. So, I may not be able to explain the whole encyclopedia, but you can explain how this will affect people. If you have a child or a family member in public school, this will affect them. If you don't like how the public school system is operating right now and how the teachers aren't getting paid right now, well, they're about to bust up teachers' unions nationwide. So, explain the effects if you can't explain all nine hundred and twenty-two pages.
Project Twenty Twenty Five is the codification of the forty-fifth president's Make America Great Again motto for his campaign. And for me, when I think about his campaign motto, I ask myself, and I beg you all to ask yourself, when was America great? Was it fifteen twenty-six to eighteen sixty-seven during the transatlantic slave trade? Was it, was it, was it eighteen ninety-eight when Republicans removed African-American legislators from this state house in the state senate in North Carolina? Was it nineteen twenty during the Ocoee massacre? Nineteen twenty-one during the Tulsa Race War? Was it nineteen fifty-one when Harry T. Moore was blown up by a bomb in his house? Was it nineteen fifty-four during the Civil Rights Movement? Was it twenty-twelve when Trayvon Martin got shot down the street? Was it twenty-twenty when George Floyd got his leg in the heat of his F and R at the need of law enforcement? I ask you, when was America great? And Project Twenty Twenty Five today is going to become Project Twenty Twenty Nine if you do not elect this man this year. And so, we have to run people that look like us, have our best interests at heart, and don't get tired. We do not have room or space to get tired in the fight. And so, we have to keep doing education, we have to keep mobilizing and keep magnetizing and keep motivating people to get in the fight and to fight like their life depends on it because it does. Because as, as society moves forward in the advancement of technology and in our access to resources and knowledge, it is only going to get worse. And we need to make sure, as my grandmother said, "If you're not at the table, then you're on the menu." So, we have to be serious, because it's no longer a joke. And what they used to do behind closed doors, they are presenting to us in printed form in our face.
Oh, boy, all of that. So, let me say, I mean, everybody up here again is absolutely correct, but Project Twenty Twenty Five, if you heard Dr. Bracy read off, is it takes out the First Amendment, the Third Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, the Seventh Amendment? So, what it continually does is it scripts the liberties. So, Project Twenty Twenty Five changes this from a republic to a dictatorship, a monarchy, and fascism continuing to spread across the nation. When you force, you know, you force somebody to embrace the nation and decriminalize it if you don't agree with them, what happens to the First Amendment? It's taken away. So, Project Twenty Twenty Five is very dangerous. It's a plan, it's a plan, and it's wild how your, their Trump supporters say, "Oh, no, he knew nothing about this." And they say it with a straight face, and look at us. What that tells me is that their brain washed into the cold called MAGA, and there's nothing that you can say that's going to change their mind about it. But that's not the end of the story, we have more people that see through this. And we have to reach out to everyone, like everyone in our circle. Each one, reach one, and teach one, take everything that you have, put everything forward. Personally, I'm putting everything into something called votahovballot.com, which is a website that helps give people, give people ideas and recommendations on who to vote for. on who to vote for. A theory is, if you give people a clue on who to vote for, they may do their own research. They can use the whole card themselves if they want, but help give people a chance to do it. Also, people have to understand that so many people were sacrificing for your rights to vote. Voting didn't come easy. I mean, if you look back on it, women in the nation have only been voting for a hundred and four years, right? For only a hundred and four years, that's not a long time. And then consistently with the Civil Rights Act from the nineteen-sixties, you probably haven't had consistent voting of blacks for just sixty years. So, it's not a long, you know, these are short periods of time. And they're turning the wheels of hands backwards. Again, we see Project 2025, and it's not a racial thing. See, it's an economic thing for us to board. It's classism. They wanted to be painted that, you know, this brother's white, this brother's black, this sister's Chinese, and we should be fighting against each other, but we should be banding together because we see what's going on. See, they wanna push all of us off the map. I'm a product of public schools. I'm a native of Cary, Indiana. We had some great teachers when I grew up. We had great teachers, we had great counselors, we had great principals. They enjoyed their job. They had the freedoms to teach us a lot. I learned a lot about Black history, not during Black History Month. And we had great educators. Now we see that they're getting paid the least. They're trying to take away the whole Department of Education, again, the apps and the hat-nots. I'm not up here without public education and so many other people. Really, but raise your hand if you went to public school. Just want you to look around. The goal is to wipe you all out, to wipe you all out. If you don't have knowledge, people suffer from their own lack of knowledge. They don't want you to learn. Take away Black history. Take away learning about the transatlantic slave trade and peoples in the black diaspora everywhere. That's just taken away so we don't know about the wrongs that were done and don't have any motivation to overcome. And it's not for this generation, it's for two generations down. And last but not least, we need to be working on our own Project 2045, 2050, 2065. We need to work on it with groups like Equal Ground, who are doing great things, with commissioners like Commissioner George Oliver, with the wisdom of Dr. Levon Bracy, and with so many other people in this room. See, we're not outmanned, we're out-organizing, out-strategizing. We don't have to be. We got a lot of talent within Central Florida. We can build from here. The solution's in the room. Lord have mercy. We all in here for a reason. Thank you, God.
There is so much in this nine hundred and twenty-two-page document. We cannot express all of it in one hour. We do have some time to take a few questions. If there are those who would like for us, any one person or the entire panel to answer a question, we have about ten minutes to entertain any questions.
You ready, Buck?
I don't have a question, but I'm here to comment out likes me. First and foremost, my name is Minnie. I call Black... Good evening, everyone. My name is Minnie Su-Minnie, and it was a pleasure to sit in on tonight and to be informed about Project 2025. I do read a lot, have heard a lot of things. A lot of times, we struggle to get people to come out to these types of events because they think it's only political related. But one thing that I do know as a young person is that everyone takes to these things called cell phones. And what we're doing on tonight, I feel like you guys need to put it on a Zoom so that we can tag people, raise awareness, because as you can see, Forty-Five is stating that he knows nothing about this. So, people perish for the lack of knowledge. Knowledge is power. We all need to be empowered. We need to educate our people, our children, our community, everybody. So let's, like you guys see it, let's spread it abroad. If we can't get them out of here, let's put it online. You all have been an excellent job, you know, reenterating the knowledge that we need to know. It's imperative, we need to know, because it affects all of us. And if it don't affect you individually, it affects someone that you know. That's all I have to say. You guys did a great job.
We just wanna say, again, excellent job. Love you, love all that you're doing, so proud of you. You and your husband did an amazing job. Chief of Staff, if this don't work out, we get, we get... You mentioned Amendment Four, but you did not mention Amendment Three, so I don't know if this panel has any... Can I start? So, that's it.
The reason it was not mentioned, my instructions were to deal with 2025. However, if we are permitted to talk about it, I'm sure that we have those who can talk about Amendment Three. And Amendment Three, for those who may not have read that document, it deals with marijuana, being recreational marijuana. And I will begin by telling something interesting that happened to me. I went to the Final Four last year, this year. And I went to Final Four because my husband and I had on our bucket list to go to a Final Four. And since he passed away, I'm gonna complete the bucket list. So, I was coming back from Phoenix, and I sat in my seat, and the gentleman sitting by me asked me where I was from, and I told him I was from Florida. And he says, "Oh, you have Amendment Three on your ballot." And I says, "Yes." He says, "Well, I live in Atlanta." And he says, "We are going to put as much money as possible in commercials so that Amendment Three will not pass." And I was very curious, because he says he's from Atlanta. And I says, "Who are you?" He says, "Well, I work for the largest company that has the medical marijuana, and we don't wanna share the wealth." And since we don't wanna share the wealth, so I don't know what the name of that company, but you see a lot of commercials. And I'm sure, and every time I see one, I think of what the man told me. "We gonna put this money in because we don't want to share the wealth." He didn't say anything about what it will do for your health, but we wanna keep the money to ourselves. My personal opinion, now, this is my personal opinion of Amendment Three. I am voting yes on Amendment Three. And I tell you why. I hear what others are saying, that it will open the floodgates to other drugs. I hear that. I am voting for Amendment Three for one reason. There are too many of my brothers and sisters that look like me that are in prison for the same thing that millionaires are going to make more money off of while they sit in prison. So, I believe that if we pass Amendment Three, we can go back to the legislators and say, "How is it that you can make money now for the state off of this and my brothers and sisters remain in jail?" So I'm voting forward not because I have never put a cigarette in my mouth, I have never smoked anything in my life. I am voting because I think that there are a lot of persons in prison that deserve a second chance. And the only way they will get that chance is if Amendment Three passes. And that's why I'm voting.
Five degrees hit that one. Just to add to that, I mean, again, the government should be about expanding liberties. It shouldn't be about taking them away. There are so many people that use recreational marijuana. And I'm a person, I don't smoke, I don't even drink. I ain't a drink continues, Lord have mercy. But, I mean, there's so many people that have access to marijuana in different ways, and it's endangering them. And now we have the opportunity to get some control on it. And as you legalize it and it's available at more places, they're not at risk of getting things that are raseleffent and all and other things that are killing our community. I hear people that keep saying that, you know, it's a gateway drug. Well, is it really? Because there's some, I mean, there's some people that utilize this and they don't utilize anything else. I mean, either people are gonna use things and find a way to do it, or they're not gonna do it at all. But this isn't increasing the chances of any of that. It's just, as Dr. Bracy said, it's gonna afford brothers and sisters the opportunity to do this and not be arrested and get felonies before the age of eighteen or twenty-one, and just take their opportunities away that they're losing, while other people, as you say, are profiting millions and millions off of it. And what we need to do is look at, after this, is look at more people, more brothers and sisters getting opportunity to own some factories that are manufacturing this. Because again, people are gonna make droves of money, and everybody deserves the opportunity to do that.
One small thing that I wanna add to that is, I think, you know, we hear a lot of commercials that tell the bad story of all the boogeyman things that are gonna happen to the state of Florida. Well, the good thing is that there are twenty-six, I believe, other states that have gone the way of recreational marijuana. And those states still exist. People are still happy, they're still living good, quality lives. And so I think, like, you know, we can't be hoodwinked into believing that Florida's miraculously, you know, float away into the ocean if Amendment Three is passed, right? This is about freedom. And I think, yes, you know, there are a lot of people who are unjustly in jail. We understand that the fact that people are gonna profit from this. We also gotta think about the families that have been interrupted, right? People who look like us, and the long-term impact of that, right? Of a father not being in their child's life all over planet. That's another reason that I will be in support of Amendment Three. Our organization has taken a position on four of the six amendments. So I'm not happy to be in support of Amendment Three.
My name is Terry Smith, and thank you so much for your presentation. The greatest threat to democracy is Project 2025. And I'd like to say too that in all the research that I've been doing on it, it didn't just come up. You know, it's been planned, it's been in effect. You have some things that are in place that are going to continue after we win this issue, you know? So my question is, what does it look like to move forward and continue to fight to make sure we don't have to continually try to get votes? I know you're always gonna have to try to get votes, but how are we going to fight this in the future, on and on and on? Because this is something that has been planned over decades, and people are already in place to exact all of the things that you have in a nine-hundred-page booklet, which may be a bit bigger the next time you're fighting. So, all the things that we care about individually, I think that's important, but those are the things that we always fight. But the greatest thing is democracy and how we're gonna be overpowered and controlled by one individual or cabinet of people who take away our rights and turn us against each other. And the biggest fight is a continuation of our conversation right now. What are we putting in place? How are we gonna do this? You know, I see we're talking. I don't know how to participate, except to listen and to speak. But what are the actions that we need to take? I have a nephew who came over, and we were talking about the election and talking about, you know, how is he gonna vote? And in his head, I don't know, he has so many factors that keep him from voting, right? But then, I can't reach him. I don't know who can reach him. I mean, to me, he's a little off, and so you can't reach him. And so, there are some people who are like that, who are not going to vote or who are not going to vote the way you say, and they have just little idiocacies that keep them from being viable voters for us, right? So, I know we need voters, but how do we concentrate our efforts? Who do we pick to drive the message forward? We already have some people who do vote. How do we get them out? How do we get them consistent? How do we get them to help? You know, I look in this church, and I know you have more congregational people on Sundays than what I see now. And I was expecting more of a trend, you know? So I just don't know how we're doing it. How, you know, people knew about this, or maybe they didn't. And how do we get that word out? You didn't know. So, I don't know. I just want things to continue, or I want us to be fighting continually, always, trying to beat whatever they put in place, whatever they're planning. So I don't know how we're gonna move forward.
Yes, certainly. I think planning is important, right? And everybody has a role in the fight for freedom. The advocate politician, the special interest group, the advocacy organization, everybody has a role to play in ensuring that we keep hope alive. Let me tell you about plans. In the fifties, here in the state of Florida, the Republican Party, they caucused for a couple of weeks, and they created this plan that was going to flip the then-blue Florida red. The plan, it took forty years for them to... And it was intentional. It wasn't, it wasn't, "We're gonna, you know, do it, do it now, or do it in two years." It was, "We are going to plan thirty years out." And in nineteen ninety-eight, Jeff Bush got elected. The Speaker for the House of Representatives that was elected to come back and serve was not elected. It was a Democrat and went home. The Senate President, they showed up, and they didn't have a Senate President. And so, they flipped Florida red because they planned forty years in advance on what they were going to do. And so, while we are sleeping, people are working. And we have to stagger our work so that none of us get burned out. And so, you know, right now, you may, we may be, these panelists, we may be the ones that are running hard right now, but we're gonna have to tag you in at some point. We need you to do the same kind of running in this relay to freedom. And so, for me, it is getting a part and being engaged is meeting with your legislators and is taking groups like this and forming think tanks for how we can make sure that we protect the rights of people that look like us. Not next year, because if you think in next year, you're already. We have to think ten and twenty years in advance. And so that's why it's important for us to run candidates that look like us, because right now, none of you can tell me who's gonna be running from either side for governor. However, the Republicans know whoever. And in twenty twenty-six, when Marco Rubio steps down for being the senior senator and Governor Ron DeSantis runs for Senate, and Marco Rubio runs for governor, then we're gonna be looking around here talking about who we run. And so, we have to make sure that we are ahead of the pace, because two years from now is too late.
And one quick thing. I think we have to view, I always say this, we have to view civic engagement as a puzzle, right? Too often, we think voting is civic engagement. We think because we voted, we've done our civic duty, and that's it. And we disappear and we wait till the next election. We have to view civic engagement as a puzzle. Voting is one piece of that puzzle. Going to meetings is another piece of that puzzle. Having community forums and discussions, meeting and talking with our legislators, staying abreast of what's going on in the legislature, like your county council or city council, right? I think that's the attitude that it really takes for us to be engaged consistently throughout the process to really see the results that will have an impact on our community.
We have time for one more question.
I want to respond to that. I want to respond to that. Thank you for speaking about your nephew, and him being a young man, kind of not focused in terms of the next step. We really need to engage these Gen Z'ers. We absolutely need to engage these Gen Z'ers. I'm of the thought that the best person to reach, the best people to reach a Gen Z'er is a Gen Z'er. I also know that, I'm forty-five years old, I know you can't tell, it's Coco, right? But, but I make sure that I keep a lot of younger people around me so that I understand their concerns, their plight. My chief of, my district aide, Janay McKissick is here, she's twenty-seven years old. Again, my chief of staff, twenty-five years old. One thing that I keep hearing is that we're not strategizing, right? Well, I've decided that I'm gonna help build the bench, right? I know what the next step, you know, I know so many people have mentioned Rashawn Young, how much they like Rashawn Young. Rashawn Young is close to me, because when I'm ready to move on, he's gonna run for the seat. You've already figured that out. So while Project 2025 is given, they'll be like, "Look, I'm giving you mine." You've already figured out, you know, what we're going to do. That's why you hear him so vocal, that's why he goes with me everywhere I go. That's why he helps me to craft policy in Tallahassee, because I've decided that it's bigger than me. It's bigger than Levon Bracy Davis. It's about the people of House District Forty. So, yeah, that's what we need to be doing, we need to be building a bench and thinking about.
Yes.
I want to add something. For our Chinese community, what we have been doing is, this is, politics is completely new to us, but we are not just getting around waiting for other people to teach us. We already, we have a data scientist, we have engineers, we have lots of academics, so we can figure this out on our own as well, instead of just waiting. So we have, you know, we don't have a lot of population, but we already have a data for all the Chinese with Chinese last names, from mainland China, from Hong Kong, Singapore, Philippines, and other countries that have a Chinese last name. They are first-generation Chinese, so they will all read Chinese. So what we did is, we come up with a bilingual text message telling them about the past in Florida, what happened in the past, the discriminatory laws, and we asked them to vote, we gave them a voter's guide, and that's how we did it. And this will reach sixty-seven counties, all Chinese with Chinese last name. That's what we did.
Hi, I'm Jackie Mahoney. I didn't know about this until this afternoon, having to put the radio on, and even then, they said it so fast, I couldn't find the address. So I apologize for being late, I'm so excited to be here. A couple of things that were brought up, one about the marijuana being a gateway. You know, this was an whole issue during the prohibition with alcohol, right? And to the point about this being a classism issue, I think we need to really think about that. Yes, racism, absolutely, but there's a classist issue that's going on, it's dividing people. We make that the focus, then we're sort of losing ground. And my big concern, along with what was expressed about this young lady's nephew, is, you know, my granddaughter, you know, was allowed to take AP, European History if she wanted, but AP African-American History was dropped. And this is a kid in high school, you know? And I get emotional when this gentleman, who's like a walking brain, I love it, you know, brought up all this stuff, you know, when he was America grade. And to hear this stuff, and I'm from New York, and what my nephew is learning in New York is so different from what my granddaughter has to push hard to learn here, that if I didn't say certain things, even if it's too much, right? That she wouldn't learn. And so I don't really know that I have a question so much as, I don't know if there was a sign-in sheet. I think it would be a great opportunity, when these gatherings happen to have that, I would love to continue to be a part of. I'm sort of new, and I don't really know how yet. But I'm really concerned, as we talk about planning thirty, forty, fifty years from now, what is gonna happen with my sixteen-year-old granddaughter, who is so busy trying to get through right now, that her whole crew is like, they don't really understand, you know, they don't even understand what's going on. So how can we impact the educational system would be something I would be really enthusiastic in.
The representative said, just now, talking about, you know, the best way to connect with the Gen Z is by having the Gen Z speak to them. I think also on top of that, a realization is that my generation is not tied to party politics. We do care about the issues that matter to us. And, you know, Martin Luther King Jr., Russell, I'm sure you're familiar with him, he's a man with Alpha Phi, I'm trying to get incorporated. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "A threat to justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." So, you know, today, we are seeing them as they are sending electric police around to fear longer people into saying that they didn't sign the petition for Amendment Four. We're seeing, you know, the fight and the attack on women today. We saw in this legislative session, this past legislative session, the fight against the LGBTQ+ community. And we see it when we are hearing about taking our history out of our schools. We are seeing the attack on African-Americans. And I know that, you know, which I don't want to open up a much larger conversation, but it is what modern-day racism looks like. It is the enforcement of superiority over a group of people. And as you have said, it has gone beyond race, and it's now transitioning to class, and it's transitioning to me, a group of people attacking people who do not share their conservative views. It pains me because too often, we fall victim and fall into this silo of being so focused on one thing, and we need to move ourselves from the porch to the balcony.
What's that?
So that we can see, see the reality of what they are doing. It is not just women, it is not just LGBTQ-, it is all of us. Because if we hold true to the words that a threat to justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, then all of us will fight for each other, because there is power in our collectiveness. There is power when we come together, but if they can silo us off into smaller groups, then they have already won the war.
Okay. We really do have to end it. I want to thank everybody for showing up, I really do. I'd like Mr. Drake to repeat his website, that is a request.
Oh, yes, it is votethehovallet.com. votethehovallet.com. I'm also on social media, at the Instagram, at the handle @votethehovallet, or hashtag votethehovallet. Again, for the Gen Z'ers.
We are going to put, and I've been given permission to let everybody know, you can go to Missing Voices, Missing Votes on LinkedIn and on Facebook, and I'm quite sure if we work with the gentleman behind that glass, we can get it on Instagram. So we'll try TikTok as well. I gotta thank everybody for coming out, and I know that my first Vice President, Dr. Spare, is gonna kill me, but I will say it anyway. We have to stop being complacent with what we do. The gentleman at the end of the table, he did not walk out with my book. That's twenty twenty-five book right there. And number two, it is wonderful to see someone who has read it. It is wonderful to see a young man who will run for something soon, I am certain, that we need to support.
That's what's up.
This panel here came through tonight. But I have to tell you that if it was not for Dr. Tarver Spare, who is a lot to me, okay, Commissioner Oliver, our bishop here, Dr. Bracy, where she walks, I'm gonna walk right with her, because she's brilliant. Absolutely brilliant. And you can tell the genes work well. Work well. And we also saw today, which we don't see in this day today, where we have a young woman who is a JD, who has the ultimate respect for her mother. And I need people to pay attention to what they see. Genesis, echo. Russell, I know Drake, but I'm old, okay? So I forget, I get those senior moments. Everybody, thank you so much, and we will do this. Missing Voices, Missing Votes will start again in January. We'll partner with everyone here, there are other organizations we're gonna partner with. We can't continue to be late. I don't want to hear people telling me, "You have thirty days, we have to vote." Well, you know, thirty days to vote, you already give a one loss. You know, you can't talk to people about thirty days to vote, you're tiring to the party. So we have to do better, and this state has to do better for the quality of life for everyone here. You're up.
Say, she really did have a senior moment when she said that Missing Voices, Missing Votes will start again in January. I don't know what she's talking about, because we don't stop. There is no stopping back from prison, I have no idea what she is talking about. We have had an incredible evening. Am I the only one that had a great time tonight? If you had a great time tonight, I think you're sticking up for your team, okay? And they just show up, appreciate you, our panel. This was absolutely amazing. So we have one individual here that has read all nine hundred and twenty-two pages. Each one of you have only seventeen pages, but seventeen important pages. Your challenge, your homework tonight is to go home and read it and share what you have learned with someone else. We thank you. We thank you for coming out tonight. We're gonna have closing remarks by Commissioner Oliver, and then we will be able to exit the building.
We have one thing to ask. We don't do sign-in sheets tonight, we're doing sign-out sheets. So you can't leave home without signing out.
So everything that was said tonight, it was said. It was all said, it was all named right here on the table tonight. I will say one thing, though. One of the things that I see in our commission meetings is, we have, we do not have a lot of folks that show up at the commission meetings. They just do not show up. But I will say this, the ones that do show up, they make it count. So again, we have a, we have a whole sanctuary full of empty seats here. But we also have sanctuary full, to your question, to your comment, well, I'm coming up to that comment, is the fact that the folks that's here, let's not count numbers, let's make our numbers count.
That for.
Make those numbers count, make these numbers count. And you talked about how you reach your nephew, how you reach the Generation Z, and I'll take it further, Generation Alpha is among us right now. We started there. And I will say this, there's one young man here, here right now, who moves around every single day. This young man right here, every day. These people, they follow him, it drools. So he's using a platform as a voice to reach those Generation Z's and Generation Alphas. This is Eli. And he represents all this for the kids. And he promotes other organizations throughout West Orange County. So get to know who this young man is, talk to him, get his number, and I guarantee you, he'll reach back out to you, and he'll be knocking the truck down and say, "Hey, where's your kids?" And let's get him engaged. So before we leave tonight, I want to say that I want to thank each and every one of you guys on the panel. Thank you guys for coming out. Bishop, thank you so much for allowing us to have your sanctuary. The lights are on, and it costs. So I'm saying, if you, if you want someone to donate anything to this church for allowing us to be here, and it's in your heart, please do so. See one of the ushers, because again, they do have to do this for us, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart for allowing us to come out tonight, for who we're all about, for the church, for the church, for the church, and that, and that, and that, and that. And God bless you, we're stood out there on the streets, on the Capitol Hill.
Oh, no, sign out, wait a minute.
I'm praying.